Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Arlington Branch NAACP. Our virtual journal membership meeting for the month of September 20th. I mean, for the month of September, the day is the 20th, excuse me, it's been a long day and it's Monday. As we noted in the agenda, the first twenty some odd minutes of our meeting will will take care of some, some business of the NAACP. And then we will pivot and turn it over to our political action committee, who will start from there and will have the, the form. Just a few housekeeping rules for those that are on the call already. Myself and the secretary, we are host and co-host respectively on this Zoom call. If at any time I feel that the chat is not disabled, we don't do that here at NAACP. But if, 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 if comments and, and conversations, if they rise to a point to where it's unnecessary for what the, the business of the NAACP, I will, in the most respectful way, remove you from this event. No harm, no foul, but this is a time for individuals in our community, our members, to, to hear from the candidates, of course, we're nonpartisan. But we're not going to tolerate, nor would I tolerate, any type of hatred or personal beliefs. You have your rights, but this is our, our collaborative forum with Alpha Phi Alpha. And we hope to have a really good event. So with that being said, feel free also, you know, Zoom, I think we have about a hundred and forty people that have registered for this event. Sometimes Zoom, if you get a lot of people on here, then you start going a little slow and acting crazy. So feel free, you don't have to be on camera. Individuals that are talking, once we get to the forum, they will be spotlighted along with the moderator. So welcome, welcome, welcome. With that being said, I'm going to stop the spotlight here for myself. And the time is now six thirty-two. I'm going to call to order again, the meeting of Arlington Branch NAACP. And with the Madam Secretary, please go ahead and make a roll call. I'm never going to have some people coming a little late. We can just check periodically the members, but go ahead and make a roll call of officers.
All right, we have the president, who is present, First Vice President Kent Carter.
I don't think he'll be with us tonight.
Second Vice President Sharice Kearns, I think she may be attending another meeting.
Yeah, I think she is.
Third Vice President Michael Heminger.
President.
Treasurer Roy Austin.
Present.
Assistant Treasurer Adriana Spain.
Present.
I'm Wanda Younger, the secretary. Assistant Secretary Dominique Jenkins. Dominique Jenkins. Executive Committee at Large Karen Nightingale.
Present.
Executive Committee at Large James Younger.
Present.
Executive Committee at Large Simone Walker. Simone Walker. At Large Member Carolyn Kane. Carolyn Kane. Communications and Publicity Leah Maderow. Community Coordination Jacob Williams.
He won't be with us tonight.
Criminal Justice Heather Kelly.
Present.
Oh, she's here. Excuse me.
She's here.
Thank you.
Criminal Justice Matt Rogers. Matt Rogers. Economic Development Megan Brew.
Here.
Thank you.
Here.
Thank you. Environmental Climate Justice Gabrielle Cantor. Gabrielle Cantor. Housing Callan Macbeth. Callan Macbeth. Labor and Industry Maya Jones. Maya Jones. Legal Redress Brendan Meehan.
Hi, I'm here.
Membership Keisha Tensley. Keisha Tensley. Political Action Jamie Abrams.
Here.
Political Action Megan Resor.
Present.
Religious Affairs Pastor Davis.
Present.
Religious Affairs Rosa Dunkley. Rosa Dunkley. Scholarship Adora Williams. Adora Williams. Scholarship Jill DeWitt.
Present.
Special Event Sheila Smith. Sheila Smith. Special Events Marvin Nels.
Present.
I conclude the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, for the roll call. At this time, we're going to ask our treasurer, excuse me, our Chair of Religious Affairs, Pastor Reverend Davis, to open us up with a quick moment of prayer. Pastor Davis?
Let us pray. Creator of us all, we thank you for this evening, for our NAACP Arlington Branch, and for all that you have entrusted to our care. We pray that all things will go smoothly tonight in this meeting, that you will continue to keep our leadership and all members of this branch, and that you will allow Arlington to go forward as a place of peace, love, justice, and harmony. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. At this time, I'm going to put up a, a poll, what we need to do, because we're not doing normal order. I'm going to launch this poll. We are suspending the rules for our branch, our regular communication. So typically, there's a set order of business, but we are suspending the rules. This goes before the membership. So the poll is out, and if you're not a member, you can just abstain. If you're a member and you want to go back to regular order, you have that right to say yeah as well. So please vote. I'm going to let this go for about thirty more seconds, and we're going to end the poll. Fifteen seconds. Okay, poll is ended. Share results. Madam Secretary, please make notes. Eighty-eight percent in the affirmative. Thirteen percent abstained, so we are suspending normal rules.
Okay.
We're going to go ahead with our financial report. Mr. Treasurer, I'll bring up the screen and share it. You want to go through that briefly? Mr. Treasurer?
Yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Starting with July. On July the first, had fourteen thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-six cents. We had donations totaling three hundred and three dollars and sixty-one cents. Our expenditures were three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Two of those were payments, stipends to the two interns, their final payments. Our ending balance in checking, eleven thousand, two hundred nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. There was no change in our business savings account, which is two hundred and four thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. The total balance on July thirty-first, two hundred sixteen thousand, fifty dollars and seventy-six cents. That is July. In August, beginning balance was again eleven thousand, two hundred nine dollars and thirty-seven cents, and this is for checking account. We had receipts of twenty-four thousand, five hundred forty-three dollars and ten cents. Of that, there was a transfer from these savings account into the checking account to pay for some scholarships of twenty-three thousand dollars. Expenditures for the month totaled nine hundred seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Savings. Twenty-fourth, one hundred eighty-one thousand, eight hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. In the checking account, thirty-four thousand, eight hundred forty-five dollars and eight cents, with a total balance on August thirty-first of two hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, for, for that report. We will now entertain, from our executive committee, any member, a motion to accept the treasurer's report, just to let you know, the executive committee met yesterday and approved said report, received it without question. So we're going to, we have to bring this before the membership, and this is your money. So we're entertaining motions to receive the treasurer's report.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Again, this is third VP.
All right, it's been moved by Reverend Pastor Delicia Davis, Chair of our Religious Action Committee, and seconded by Michael Heminger, our third Vice President, that we receive the report coming from the treasurer. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? Are there any questions? There being none, you can come off mute. All approved by saying aye.
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 The polls have the same right. As have it motion carried. Thank you much, Mr. Treasurer. Okay, we're six thirty, so I have a few minutes here, about eight minutes, to give you some updates before I turn this over to our outstanding political action committee. Let me give you a few updates here. Well, before I get to that, what we do need to do is put up another vote here to the membership. Yesterday, the executive committee identified the delegates from our branch and two alternates that are going to attend the Virginia State Conference Virtual Meeting, Virtual Convention, next month. Madam Secretary, do you have those names ready to read out?
I do.
Can you just tell everyone who they are?
It's President Julia Spain, Branch Secretary Wanda Younger, Scholarship Jill DeWitt, Executive Committee at Large James Younger, Assistant Treasurer Adriana Spain, and Executive Committee at Large Karen Nightingale.
And the two alternates?
And the two alternates are Callan Macbeth.
Pastor Davis.
Pastor Davis.
Okay. We have to also bring that before our membership. So what I'm going to do, we have another poll here. Let me stop sharing this. Anytime we are sending delegates from our branch to represent us, the membership needs to know who they are, and we, you need to approve or disapprove of that. So I'm going to launch a poll to either approve delegate, approve the delegates and alternates to attend the state convention. The, you know, yea, nay, or abstain. The poll was being launched. And give it fifteen more seconds. Hmm, still going, excuse me. Share results. Can everyone see it? Just show your thumbs up, that'll be fine. Results are eighty-nine percent. Madam Secretary, are you capturing this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, for participating. With a few of love, just some, I mean, there.
President Spain, if you could hear me, I believe your video is frozen.
I'm sorry. This is what happens when you get a lot of folks on the screen. Sorry about that. If you don't mind, just coming off video.
For the time being, if you're on video, can you turn your video off?
So. Losing, of course.
If you can hear me, President Spain, your video is frozen. And there is no sound.
Why don't I go ahead and turn this over to the political action committee? Political Action Committee, are you there?
Yeah, one second.
Okay.
My camera.
And Jamie, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you my host. I think I can, or Madam Secretary, can you do that in case something happens? So Jamie, you can do all the spotlighting of the moderators and stuff like that, because I have an unstable connection, even here with Verizon. I'm not sure what's going on. All right, and Madam Secretary, you might give Jamie a co-host right now?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. And Madam Secretary, do you want us to continue with the agenda as planned?
Yes, yes, please.
Wonderful. So before the very talented Cassie DeFinn leads our program for the rest of the night, the program leader for our two candidate forums, we wanted to take a moment to hear from Karen Nightingale. And Karen Nightingale is our, our branch past president and a current executive committee member at large. And she has some words to share, and then Cassie will kick off our proper program that follows.
Thank you so much, Jamie. Madam Secretary, are we ready?
Yes.
All right. I'll wait for you to present.
Okay.
All right, tonight, we have the exciting opportunity to present to one of our own Leadership Award to our own President Julia Spain. I hope he can hear me and see me. The executive branch of the Arlington Branch of NAACP wants to thank Mr. Spain for doing all of the wonderful things he's done in the community, things he's done in the past and in the present, things he's going to do in the future. So for all those who cannot read this, I will see this, outstanding Leadership Award and recognition and appreciation to Julius D. JD Spain Senior, Arlington Branch NAACP President. The Arlington Branch NAACP Executive Committee would like to recognize you for your steadfast leadership, your dedicated service, and your unwavering advocacy for the community. We are grateful, so grateful to work with you, and are thankful to have you as our president. We just wanted to give you your flowers while you can see them. We wanted to make sure that everyone else gets awards, everyone else does these things in the community, but we want to appreciate our own, and that's the best thing that we could do for you. So, Mr. Spain, congratulations. You should have your award. I think it's going to be delivered, or has been delivered. But we are extremely excited to do this for you and appreciate all you've done for the branch. And as a former president, I know it's hard work, and I so appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Oh, wow, y'all are very sneaky.
And before we, we, before we go on, we have a few words.
Have a few words. Is Vice President Kent Carter on?
Yes, Karen, thank you so much. I just wanted to take a few minutes, I'm going to leave my camera off since we're having technical difficulties. I hope everyone can hear me. I just wanted to echo the words that Ms. Nightingale just gave on President Spain. Congratulations for this outstanding award. This was a no-brainer. A, a lot of the members see all the hard work and everything that you do out in the community, but they don't get the privilege and the honor to see all of the hard work that you do behind the scenes. The countless phone calls, all the meetings, all the coordination that it takes to run a branch that's this big. So you know, I get to see just the tip of the spear. So I mean, I understand all the hard work that you do. We're so grateful and, you know, honored to be able to work alongside you and see how much of an impact that you have on this community. So thank you so much for all your hard work and efforts that you put in, day in and day out. And with that, I think Third Vice President Mike Heminger has a few words he wanted to add.
Thank you. I'd like to first thank the First Vice President and our past president for their remarks. They pretty much covered it. You know, like they mentioned, our president kind of like the Energizer Bunny. He just keeps going and going and going. We were supposed to be off for the month of August, but you know, we weren't really off. Injustice doesn't rest, and neither did our president. And like President or Vice President Carter just mentioned, I've had many midnight phone calls with him, whether it's to discuss, you know, strategy for the branch, next steps on some of the moving projects here in Arlington County, or to just be a sounding board. So President Spain, this is just a small token of our appreciation. And as mentioned, you'll also be receiving this in person this week. I did want to close with a quote before I pass it back to you, and it goes, "Commit yourself to the noble struggle for equal rights. You will make a greater person of yourself, a greater nation of your country, and a finer world to live in. Mr. President, you inspire all of us, and we're all greater because of your leadership." So at this time, I'd like to pass it back over to you. But before I do, let's just give President Spain one more big round of applause. Thank you, President Spain.
I, I'm chuckling because that is, y'all surprised me. And Karen, that piece about give people their flowers while they're living made me think about a lot. You know, wow. I do this not in so much, it's not for me. Um, many of y'all know I come from down south, and it was a struggle coming up. The things I saw, experienced, and even with twenty-six years in Marine Corps, some of the injustices that I experienced, you know, the military is not immune to a lot of things we've dealt with here, I tell you that. But when I came to Arlington in two thousand nine and started working under the tutelage of Elmer L. H. Low Senior and Karen Nightingale, I know I had my work cut out for me, and I sat back and I listened and I watched Arlington. And yeah, we have a good, good, good buzz line about what Arlington is all about, but one thing I do know for certain, having three children that went through the school system, some even been involved with, unfortunately, with some of our police. Justice, there, there was a lot of injustice, and there were so many people left behind. So I find I, this, this, I'm driven. Most people know that, and failure is not an option in what we do. NAACP is a hundred and twelve years old, and I think about it constantly, about those that sacrifice so much heretofore to put us in this position. And there's expectation that, that we have to live up to. We're not a political organization. But we are here to answer, to, to ask the tough questions and to answer the call. We've done just that. So I'm just, I'm proud of everyone on this call, everyone in our community who believes in social justice and civil rights. But we know for sure, and there's a lot more work to be done. And as long as I have breadth in my body and the ability to engage, you can trust and believe that I will, Mike. And Kent, First VP, you got me. This is a good one, I know, this is a good one. But we have an agenda tonight, and we're going to get to it, but I thank you, past president, I thank you, team. Let's keep giving it to them. Because that's what expected. We can agree to disagree at times. But there's people out there in our community who can't come to these meetings, who can't go to board meetings, who can't just engage and sit on committees after committees, and they're counting on us to be their voice, to be that beacon of light. And I challenge the system of oppression. And we're going to do it. And people say oppression may be a reach, but that's what is going on. Oppression, discrimination, racism, it still exists. So we got to root it out. And we will continue to do that. So thank you. Let's get on with the program. I'm a little emotional, right? That, that, that's Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Spain. I extend my congratulations. It is praise well deserved. All right. I want to thank everybody for joining us here tonight. I am Kathy Daphin, member of the Political Action Committee. And this is our Fall Candidate Forum for School and County Board Candidates. This program is vital to civic engagement. At the NAACP, this is a nonpartisan organization. We do not endorse any candidates at all. We welcome all candidates here to be part of this civic engagement and discussion. The ground rules for this event is that there will be no campaigning in the chat. This is about engagement and education, not advocacy or advocating today. We hope that everyone in this audience and anyone who sees this recording feels engaged and informed and prepared to vote. So let's start with a little bit of audience participation. You have a couple pop quiz trivia questions for you. How many members are there in the school board? I'll give you about ten seconds to answer, if anybody can recall. All right, well, this is going to be a learning thing for us all. So there are five members of the school board. They govern Arlington Public Schools through policies and policy implementation. Next question, how long is the term of someone on the school board? Yes, yes, got it correct, Adam. It is four years long, and they have staggered elections, and there is one open seat up for election. And there is one open seat up for election this year. True or false? The school board seat is a partisan seat. Right Kathleen, false. This is strictly a nonpartisan position by state statute. And here we're going to some county board question. How many members are there in the county board? There are five. Their responsibilities include personal, setting personal property tax rates, appointing community members to citizen advisory groups, appointing the county manager who administers the policies made by the board, and reviewing and adopting the budget proposed by the county manager. Right? How long do board members serve? Right Claire, four years. Again, staggered elections and there is one seat open for this election. Final question, what day is election this year? Right Kathleen, November 2nd, 2021. Mark that down on your calendars. That is the actual official voting date. However, you do have the chance to vote by mail between September 17th and October 22nd. And the red and early voting starts on September 17th. The deadline to register to vote is October 12th. So be sure to do that. And now, while the NAACP has put this together, it wasn't by ourselves. So we do have some co-sponsors for this event who I would like to welcome forward. First, we have Alpha Phi Alpha, George Griffin.
Hello, good evening, everyone. My name is George Griffin. I'm a member of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated was founded over 114 years ago and since then has been encouraging voters to vote in every election. One of the things that we pride ourselves on is a voteless people is a hopeless people. And the founders of Alpha were right there with the NAACP at the founding of the National Association for the Advancement of Color People as well. We do want to recognize that they were a Lambda chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated. It's seated right here in Arlington County as well as in Alexandria City, covering this area and serving our community. We also are excited to be co-sponsors in this evening's event and we wish all the candidates well. In addition to that, we do encourage everyone to vote. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. And now, before we begin, and I have to pass this off to our moderator, I want to draw everyone's attention to something that we're going to post in the chat quite soon. The Political Action Committee took on a very, I would say monumental challenge, but definitely worth it, to create a compilation of questionnaires of candidate responses for issues that we think are important for voters to know about. It was a bit of a task and it took a lot of collaboration. We thanked the candidates for completing them in a timely manner. We sent them out in August and we got them all back by the end. So thank you for that, candidates. We invite you to download the questionnaire yourself. It is currently posted in the chat. Feel free to look that over and read carefully what each candidate had to say to the prompt. I want to thank the Political Action Committee members who went above and beyond to get this thing completed in time for this forum. And just a shout out to a few of them. And if you see them in the chat, please show them love. So our two co-chairs, Megan Reeser and Jamie Abrams, also J.C. Jones, Jan Marie Penner, Brandon Meehan, Heather Stamos, and our interns, Leoni Alder and Melanie Thomas. Thank you so much for your work. This is a compilation of a lot of information and I think all of our voters definitely appreciate it. And now, without further ado, oh, I'm sorry, but right before it begins, I know I'm so ready to get this started and pass it off to Moderator Jones. The real issue here and why we are doing this is because your vote matters. What we want everyone to do is to register to vote in this coming election. We're going to be dropping some links into the chat. These are links for you to register to vote. There are some informational flyers, and if you'd like to help register others to vote, please sign up to be a volunteer for one of our events. All right. And now she has joined me here. I would like to pass.
Catherine?
Yes.
Can we give 30 seconds to Pastor Davis to the comments she made? Can we highlight her for just a second because it's very important. So.
Okay, yes, yes, Pastor Davis.
Thank you. Just want to encourage everyone to go out to vote. And in particular, if you can, go out on Sunday, the 24th of October, and encourage your faith community as well. We only have limited times that Sunday voting is allowed and they are using that as a basis for whether it'll be allowed in future elections. So we do want to encourage everyone to go. It is the day this call, Souls to the Polls, October 24th. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Davis. Always something to have on your calendar, October 24th. All right. So if many of you had joined us for our May candidate forum, you may have already met our moderator, Mrs. Lilia, Mama Jones. She is an active community member and just one heck of a lady. And I'm so happy to pass this off to her to be our moderator.
Thank you, Catherine, and good evening, everyone. It's good to be here again. I want to thank you to the Arlington chapter, Arlington branch of the NAACP and the Political Action Committee for asking me to moderate this important discussion this evening. I am very honored to be here. I'm going to do my best to keep us focused and to make sure that our candidates address the issues that are important to NAACP membership. Again, they've posted the link for the Arlington, Virginia branch candidate guide for this election. So if you want, you can click on that because that's got the specific information in regard to the questions that I'm going to be referencing here. So that candidate questionnaire is 15 pages of thoughts and ideas of interest to the people who are members of this organization. All of these positions, of course, require political capital and resources to execute. So of the questions that we asked in the questionnaire, they range from the environment to police, community relations, to housing, to small business. We want to know from our candidates, and we're going to give you one minute as we start, what single question or action plan resonated the most with you as the legacy that you would like to leave in Arlington County if elected? So we can start with Mr. Cantwell.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you, President Spain, and thank you, the Phi Alpha, Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I would, I would like to talk a little bit about voting. I think that was mentioned during the opening remarks and I think that's really important. I'm the only person that is running for.
Mr. Cantwell, I'm sorry, but we need to keep you focused on the question. So we want to know which issue is the issue that resonated the most with you? Is that, was voting one of the, I don't believe that that was one of the questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was a little caught off guard here because it's the first question. So, let me, let me talk about the one that I think resonated most with me. So I think it was mostly with the tree canopy and the benefits to the community for, you know, tree canopy coverage. So let me talk a little bit about the environment. There, I am, one of my key priorities is to curb rapid urbanization. So I chose those three words very carefully. The incumbent usually introduces himself as a urban planner. I'm not an urban planner. I'm a 28-year resident of Arlington. I've lived in my home in New Yorktown community for 22 years. I do believe in smart growth along the major arteries in Arlington. But myself and many of my neighbors, including Ms. Jones across Langston Boulevard, are concerned about rapid urbanization of the interiors of the residential communities. So myself, I live about 300 feet from Langston Boulevard. I was on the.
You have about 10 seconds.
Okay, I was on the Lee Highway Alliance and I am, I am for some sort of things to save the tree canopy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, next, Ms. Clement, could you give us your perspective in terms of the single question on that questionnaire that resonated the most with you in terms of the legacy you want to leave here in Arlington?
Yes, well, it was the question pertaining to how to promote affordable housing in Arlington County. And the reason why this issue is gripping is because I want to defeat the notion that missing middle or upzoning, single-family home neighborhoods will actually result in more housing for people of color and anyone who's earning less than area median income. In other words, my concern is not so much to attack the concept itself, but to defeat the notion that it will actually benefit people of color. Upzoning will densify neighborhoods by replacing single-family homes with multifamily dwellings. While it will produce more housing, that housing will not be affordable to anyone earning less than area median income, which is already about $120,000 a year. And for proof, I ask you to look no further than the Highview Park neighborhood, which I believe Ms. William, Ms. Wilma Jones is.
You have about 10 seconds, Audrey.
All right, where two duplexes priced at $1.2 million apiece replaced a home about half of that assessed value.
Thank you very much for that perspective. I know many people are interested in that. So hopefully we can get more on your perspective. Mr. Karen Tonis, could you please give us your perspective in terms of the single question that resonated the most with you as the legacy you want to leave in Arlington? You're on mute. We can't hear you.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Thank, I was thanking you. I have to tell you that the, it's an excellent way to open a conversation. And my answer to that is question number 10, which is, how county government will ensure equity and inclusion in its decision-making? Because everything that we are going to talk about today, regardless of how well-formulated our ideas are, how well-funded our policies are, if we cannot establish a way to reach out to the entirety of the Arlington population, if we cannot include everybody, every Arlingtonian, including, of course, those who have been traditionally and historically excluded, then I don't believe that we will have beneficial results for everybody. Every single piece of the problems that we face today, whether it is housing, the environment, health inequalities, we've seen through the pandemic, the basis that we didn't talk to everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I'm sorry, guys, I'm going to keep you tight because we have a lot we want to go through with you this evening. So let's finish with Mr. Thea.
Sure, diving right in. The second one is a very close second. It's overseeing law enforcement. But I do have a similarity with Audrey Clement in my first question of affordable housing. That's about the only thing that we agree on, though. Being able to build new housing is key to solving so many of the problems that we have in this community and that are facing communities of color. We can't subsidize our way or rent our way or restrict our way out of the problems that our government, federal, state, local, spent decades, generations building up with obviously clearly racist discriminatory laws that allowed white families to own, build, single-family homes and properties, but restricted everyone else. The big problem that our affordable housing is facing in this county is that it's focused too much on renting and subsidizing nonprofit corporations to continue that process. We need to be using community land trusts and other options to help people of color buy into property to build up that wealth that they can pass down to next generations, basically using the exact same thing that white families and white individuals were able to do for generations. It isn't.
I'm going to stop you so we can keep this even, but I'm going to have you answer the next question because it is a kind of the next step in terms of the things that you were speaking of. So on the candidate questionnaire, fair housing drew out lots of distinction, as we can hear here in the opening, in regard to three separate questions addressing fair housing, housing quality and home ownership slash wealth generation, just as you spoke of. So you started answering this question at the end of the first one. So Mr. Theo, I want to ask you to go first in terms of what single priority item do you plan to address in housing and how will you do it? And I'm going to read this straight from the, from the direction that was given to me by the Political Action Committee and the members. "We are not looking for whimsical goals and aspirations. They feel like we ask this question year after year, candidate forum after candidate forum. So what we want to know is what can we do to make progress on these deep and longstanding issues?" And Mr. Theo, I think you were coming straight to that. So I'm going to let you answer this first before we go to the other candidates.
Great, thank you, Mama.
And you have 90 seconds for this one.
All right, thank you. So to tackle these housing issues that we have in the county, specifically with generating wealth, building wealth, and being able to pass it on, it is the key to that. I think the one program that we can take, that we can tackle right now in the real world is investing in community land trusts. For those that are not familiar with CLTs for short, it's basically a way of structuring a nonprofit, typically a co-op, to own the land underneath buildings, which secures it from redevelopment and from other outside forces coming in and inflating the costs and allows owners to share and build on top of that land. It reduces costs, it provides for stability, and it can make use of existing housing stock. No redevelopment required. The, and to get to CLTs, in order to invest in these, we should be able to take and open up the HF funds, the Affordable Housing Investment Fund, which is currently exclusively used to subsidize rental units. But we need to open it up, broaden that, to be able to invest in community land trusts as well to help individuals and families buy property for less than they currently can in this county and to be able to hold on to that property and pass it on to next generation.
Thank you very much. Very interesting idea. Now, I want to hear the interesting ideas next from Ms. Clement. Could you talk to us a little about what single priority item you plan to address in housing and how you will do it? So again, making progress on these deep and longstanding issues in our county.
Well, I certainly agree with Mr. Theo on the need for community land trusts. One of the few mechanisms by which minorities or anyone in Arlington County earning less than area median income can hope to achieve in the way of a homeownership without undue financial burden is through the establishment of community land trusts. And according to Community Wealth Organization, these trusts are nonprofit, community-based organizations designed to ensure community stewardship of land. So when the homeowner sells his property, most of the actual land value underneath reverts back to the community. Such an arrangement is needed here because due to its scarcity and proximity to metro, land values in Arlington are so grossly inflated that anything built on it is priced out of reach of low and moderate income families. Another mechanism to increase housing affordability for people of color would be to reinstate the tax credit for renovation of multifamily dwellings that was rescinded by the county board in its fiscal 2021 budget. Most people are not aware of that. And that basically removes the last remaining incentive for landlords to renovate market rate affordable housing. So I think you should all take that into consideration in who you decide to vote for this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Clement. Next, we can go to Mr. Karen. Mr., can I just call you Mr. Takis? Because I always, I always put the emphasis on the wrong syllable. I don't know why.
This is, actually, you pronounce it very correctly. There was absolutely no problem. No wrong syllable there.
So again, the question is the single priority item you plan to address, how you will do it, and again, addressing these deep and longstanding issues.
Yeah, because they are so deep and longstanding issues and because they are so complex, a single, a single priority is not going to. uh, a single, a single priority is not going to give you a complete policy direction. It uh, I always will say right now that single first priority is to make the bucks of the Affordable Housing Investment Fund go, stretch them to go further as much as we can in all possible ways. This is uh, what I consider my absolute first priority. And we have enormous opportunities still on our corridors and our more densified uh, places. As a community, as a jurisdiction, we invest proportionally more than any other uh jurisdiction here in Northern Virginia. But the, 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 the hill to climb is really steep and everything is against us. I hear with a lot of interest, the discussion about community land trusts and and a lot of other instruments. I may uh, remind everybody that we have a huge scarcity of land, so the, the land that could go into trust is not going to alleviate immediately so much. Now, the second thing, and that's a very big priority and it takes an entire community to build on this, is zoning reform. We have land in Arlington that is de facto segregated, where we cannot house more households per acre while we can, where we have the schools, where we have the, the, the transportation assets we can, where our public dollars can go further. And this is where we, where I want to work a lot. It's dollars and zoning policy.
Thank you very much. And then let's end with Mike, Mr. Cantwell. You're on mute.
I think black homeownership is the most important thing. We, we need to better understand what are the factors that are limiting uh, black and brown people from owning their own homes or their own condos. Um, I don't know the answer, but I do know that I have talked to a lot of people. I've talked to my black friends at work and I've talked to my black friends who were involved in real estate and development. I called the incoming president of the Northern Virginia Realtors and we did, we discussed this issue. So I want to better understand um, why Realtors uh steer black uh, people who are looking for homes to certain neighborhoods. I want to understand why there are not more black and brown people who are choosing to live in the Yorktown community. Um, many, many people are choosing to live in other areas and so I wouldn't, I want to understand that better. So the bottom line is, I don't know the answer, but I'm, I'm a good listener and I'm very curious. And I want to understand what are the factors that are limiting uh, people from owning homes in these communities.
Thank you very much. Interesting. Um, if we have anyone who wants to, um, well, actually, I think we've covered housing pretty good, but let's, let's take another step into a different area of housing in terms of the county board holding developers and other large businesses. And I'm gonna talk about one in my backyard, Virginia Hospital Center. How, how is the county board gonna hold these people accountable for their actions? Because what's happening is the county board approves a site plan with a certain number of regulations saying you can't have lights on after nine o'clock. You can't start before seven o'clock. Trucks can't drive down this street or whatever the stipulations are. But then, when the construction starts, the people who work for the county, who are the project managers, refuse to hold the developers and the businesses to those requirements. There are no fines. There's never anything that's happening. How can the community, what do we have to do in order to get the county board to hold these people accountable for the agreements that they make with the county? We're having a major problem with that from almost every area that has big development going on. So I want to start with you, Takas, since you're our current member.
Yep. Thank you, Wilma. I'm very much aware of uh, how uh, ScanSky, which is this, in this case, the develop, the construction company uh, there.
Let's not talk about them specifically because people.
Oh yeah, it's there, there. They should know that we are going to go after them.
Okay.
So that's the number one. That, that's number two, thankfully, uh, Wilma, it's not everybody that's behaving so egregiously out of bounds like uh, your, your neighbors at the Virginia Hospital Center. And I'm truly appalled from what I heard from the community and from, from the immediate neighbors of the center about how this construction project is going. If every construction project in Arlington was going so bad and the construction uh, company was so, so egregiously negligent about any notion of neighborhood matters.
What is the county board gonna do? That's the question.
The county board has to uh, enforce the rules and has to enforce the law. We have to find them. We have to work with the communities to monitor them properly. We have to employ the appropriate personnel to do that. One of the biggest problems here is literally the scarcity of, of, of personnel to, to oversee, to oversee the entirety of construction projects that are going uh, right now in Arlington at the level of detail that would catch all of the uh, of the misdemeanors there and the egregious um, you know, uh, problems that some construction companies produce. The, last but not least, we have to keep, and that's what the county board should do all the time, and I'm trying to do that as good as I can, uh, is to keep touch with the communities that surround this project and listen and transfer to the administration all the issues that come, come up. I get every week dozens of complaints and I'm transferring every single one and I'm checking that something is done about that. So uh, I, I, I reserve, I, I yield the time back. I believe that we'll have a community um
I think he's been over.
Discussion with you.
Over a minute.
Yes, you're over, but um, we also have a comment in the chat, but let's go ahead and go, uh, Mike, why don't you go next?
As I knock on doors in the Green Valley and Highview Park neighborhoods, I hear a lot of frustration from the residents. They're frustrated with the county board. They're tired, tired of being talked at and not listened to. Um, they are tired of the long, long delays in the, in the major capital projects such as uh, Fire Station Number Eight and the John Robinson Town uh Village in the Green Valley neighborhood. They're also frustrated and angry with the Soreno Apartments fiasco with the mold and the rodents and the insects. And this is part of the problem that we have in the government, in the county government, is that many of the donations and the grants going to these um, affordable housing organizations, um, it, it, it breeds a possibility of corruption when the same people who are getting the grants and the loans are the ones that are giving donations to the county board candidates. I pledge not to take uh, any donations from any of these type of organizations. I will not take any uh, donations from political action committees and I will not take any donations from unions.
Thank you, Mike. Um, next, uh, let's go to Audrey and then Adam.
Okay, so earlier this year, or maybe it was last year, um, there was a, a con- a controversy over the Penzance development in West Roslyn, um, involving a, a massive uh, two, two massive skyscrapers that were there under construction. And the uh, Penzance uh workers were simply violating uh, their curfew. They were on, they were working after hours. Uh, they refused to stop. And so what the neighbors did in one of the large, in several of the surrounding uh, housing apartment buildings was they descended on county board and they raised this issue with the county board at the time when Penzance was requesting some sort of an easement uh, or relaxation of rules or something that would benefit them. They ta- the, the neighbors knew about it. They testified against it. They were able to circumvent the one speaker rule because this was an agendized item rather than simply public.
But Audrey, you're not telling us about what you would do. That, that's what we want to know.
Okay, so what I would do if elected is I would encourage neighbors uh, with situations uh, like this involving large developers uh, to testify uh, when items uh, regarding that site, site plan amendments come up for county board deliberation. And I would ask those residents, their civic associations to stay abreast of the situation and encourage residents to testify on that day. That's one of the things that I would recommend.
Uh, okay, you, you're up time, but um, we are he- hearing from uh, members who are putting things in the chat that I think you are, may wanna, may want to um, to take a look at because they are definitely reacting to um, some of the responses. And let, let's finish up this question. Go ahead, Adam.
Sure. There are two things that uh, county board members, if they were motivated enough to do. The first one is something that the NAACP is already very good at and familiar with. It is using the bully pulpit, getting out there in front of the media and putting people on the spot, hurting their reputations if need to. NAACP has seen this with the county board uh, with the uh, the death of the inmates uh, almost a year ago now. County did nothing, was quiet, silenced until NAACP stood up, put out press release, got in front of media and then only then did the county board finally respond. County board members can use this same principle, the same tactic against the developers and the construction companies that are violating agreements. The second way to do it is to hit them where it hurts. That's really ultimately the only way you get their attention and get them to change their behavior. Money. If they've signed agreements, take them to court. Stop playing nice, stop being patient, stop talking and listening. Do it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, let, let's talk about something that was a big issue in the county this year. Um, lots and lots of press and we're talking about media, but also lots of feedback from the community. Um, and I'm talking about the civilian oversight board. We want to know, did, what the current county board set up in terms of the requirements and the, and the regulations and the engagement of the community level um, for this board as approved? Does it align with your vision for police community relations? And if not, we want to know specifically what changes to be ma- that you would make. So again, there seems to be a sense that this is a part of a larger issue. And I just want to say that the overall perception from many of the members is that, and these are also people I know who are not NAACP members, but there's a perception that the board is more aligned with interests that are not the ones that the community is telling you we want. So what we want to know is, did the civilian oversight board meet your vision? And if not, what changes would you make? And let's start again with our current member, Mr. Takas.
Thank you, Wilma. Um, as you, as you know, when the, the initial um, proposal for um, the zoning the ordinance uh, to create a civilian oversight board came to the, the board, I had to uh, reject that. I had to vote against that. And the reason was because it was lacking a, a, a critical element out of three. The first thing, uh, we wanted the, the board, the community wanted the board to have um, uh, uh, the uh, the subpoena power. The second thing, it wanted to have investigative power. And the third thing, it wanted to have disciplinary power. So uh, because the second one was missing, the, the, the investigative power, I had to vote against that. And then we engaged in a very long and intensive dialogue where the NAACP was part of it and many other members of the community and the affected communities. And we fixed that to a great degree.
I, I, time is running.
Okay, so the, the last one is, uh, we have to now to nominate the board and we have to make it work and we have to fund it and staff it. This for, this is for me.
So, hold up, but just let me, Takas, just answer the question. Did, just answer either yes or no. Did it align with your vision?
It aligned mostly with my vision in the, in its last.
Yes or no? Either did or did?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, guys. We got a minute on this because again, we've got a few more questions and we have another um, another board, I mean, another set of candidates to talk to. Um, let's talk to um, Theo next.
Sure. In short, no, it did not align with my vision. It fell pretty far short of what we really need. And I say this as someone who has worked alongside law enforcement for most of my life. Um, nine years with Department of Homeland Security as a communications consultant. And, but what's more, I've been through the criminal justice system. You know, I was a troubled teen and uh, committed crimes, guilty, of course, and spent four months in county jail down in Florida. So I can see from both sides, but I can undeniably say we need some serious, major radical police reform in this country and in this county.
So what change would you make? What change?
The county oversight board, it, it was good with the subpoena. I'm glad we got the subpoena power. But it fails utterly with not being able to properly investigate and not being able to follow through and discipline. Those are the things that is, that are integral to uh, an actual proper civilian oversight board. Uh, one last thing is it needs to be independent. Right now, it's still under the county manager. That isn't enough. It needs to be taken out of the current structure. Uh, so it really has to be an independent civilian oversight board.
Thank you very much for your perspective. Um, let's go to Mr. Cantwell next.
In June of last year, myself and, and three other residents uh, formed the Arlington County Police Department Reform Organizing Committee. We submitted a petition asking to have body warm cameras, to have um, more data and also to create a public safety commission. This was going to be a citizen-led commission that would broaden it beyond just police to anything to do with public safety. So firefighters and paramedics.
Um, I'm taking that.
I'm going, I'm going to it. I'm going to it. So.
I'm just, I just want you to yes or no too.
Okay, so I um, I am not aligned with the current citizen oversight uh, commission. I do not think that the citizen-led commission should have investigatory or subpoena power. Um, elections are where you should hold people accountable. You should hold the current county board who appoints the county manager and the police chief, hold them accountable, vote them out. You should hold the governor, the attorney general of the state of Virginia accountable, vote them out. And if it goes all the way up to the FBI and the Justice Department, vote them out. That's how you should control oversight, by voting out politicians that are, that are not holding police accountable.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Audrey, can you finish out this question for us?
Yes, of course. I support the recently instituted community oversight board with subpoena power to field police-related complaints from the community. However, in situations where the oversight board exercises concurrent jurisdiction with the police department in a personnel matter, I believe that the COB should have binding authority as the likelihood of the police chief honoring a recommendation of the COB that goes against his own decision is nil. I think the county board's role should be limited to appointing members to the COB regarding the appointment of the independent policing auditor. I like the fact the COB will be consulted in his or her hiring, but am concerned that the final decision rests with the county manager. And again, the likelihood is the county manager will side with the police chief whom he hires in any dispute with the COB. Thus the need for an auditor who is not also beholden to the county manager. And so the answer to this question is because uh, the board is uh, has, does not have um, independent disciplinary thor- authority, I believe that it is a um, toothless tiger.
So your answer is no. Okay. Thank you very much. Great discussion. So now we're gonna switch and we're gonna go to the candidate specific questions that were developed by the political action committee, drawing upon the answers that each of you gave to the NC double, NC double, excuse me, NAACP boo boo, um, questionnaire. So in this one, we're gonna give you thirty seconds for rebuttal if anyone wants to make a statement after one of your competitors. So um, Theo, let's start with you, Mr. Theo. You were the only candidate that proactively mentioned qualified immunity and militar, demilitarizing the police in your candidate questionnaire. How would you work to accomplish these two goals in the next ninety seconds you have?
Sure. So for qualified immunity, that's the slightly more difficult one since it involves lobbying and pressuring our state Commonwealth government to make that change. It's not something that the county can do on its own, unfortunately. So we have to band together with our elected representatives, not just the ones that are elected to House of Delegates and State Senate, but also using some power of our elected representatives for US Congress and US Senate to apply some pressure to the Commonwealth. Um, there have some, there have been some press. There have some, there have been some prescidents on ending qualified immunity across the country. Not nearly as many as I'd like to see by now, but there have been some. And in all of those cases, it's going well. There's nothing to fear from ending qualified immunity over our police officers or other government agents. Regarding, what was the other point? It's in my mind. Sorry. So regarding the, yeah, so qualified immunity, easy or not easy, unfortunately. And Wilma, what was the the second one?
Demilitarizing the.
Demilitarizing us. Thankfully, that is something that we can do. First of all, it's a matter of not buying military-grade equipment when the DOD or other programs offer it to us. We, you cannot be a community police force if you're a militarized police force. There's no way that you can have both of those things. If you have a police department or a law enforcement agency that has that mindset, you can't do anything else. So it really comes down to a matter of not buying the equipment, not going down that route.
Thank you. Next, Mike Cantwell. Your candidate questionnaire.
Oh, different question, sorry.
You have a different question. We're giving specific questions in regard to how you answered questions on the questionnaire. So you talked about the idea that eliminating the business tangible property tax is beneficial to achieve some of the action items of interest to the NAACP. So we would like for you to explain to our members how eliminating that business tangible property tax would benefit communities of color. Again, 90 seconds for these questions.
Absolutely. The business tangible property tax causes small businesses or even consultants, like many of you are here, to to document and keep inventory on everything they purchase, a table, a computer, a bookstand, anything, and they have to tally all that up and then they have to submit that to the the Commissioner of Revenue and then they get a tax bill back. So it's a highly inefficient and ineffective tax. It causes a great deal of administrative burden to small businesses. And many of these small businesses are are people in the black community. They do not have the resources of a large corporation like Amazon or or something like that. So it really disproportionately affects people in in the members of the NAACP. It's also only about 4% of the revenue of the county, so it's inefficient and ineffective. My proposal is to completely eliminate the tax. And that would free up entrepreneurs to come relocate to Arlington because they're going to be, Arlington will be different than Fairfax County or other counties. They won't have this tax. So I think it will spur innovation in the county and it will have a beneficial effect on the black and brown community.
Thank you. Next, we want to go to Ms. Clement. So one of your questionnaire responses disavows the benefits of restorative practices, which have been implemented in our county, and it cites the Parkland school shooting as support. Yet, communities of color have been asking for these restorative practices and identifying them as vital to transformative change. How would you explain to communities of color why your view should override here?
Restorative justice is an officially sponsored mediation technique whereby victim and perpetrator dialogue about the crime what was committed as a way to mitigate its effects and prevent its occurrence. Academic studies have shown that restorative justice lowers the rate of recidivism. Nevertheless, I am concerned about its potential for abuse, particularly in schools. It has been widely reported that Parkland school shooter Nicholas Cruz had a long and violent history as a student in Florida's Broward County School System, including threatening teachers and physical assault. Because the school district had adopted a restorative justice program recommended by the Obama administration, Cruz was not arrested, although he had been expelled. Because Cruz had no criminal record, he was able to purchase a gun. Also, because Cruz had no criminal record, the FBI ignored tips that would have otherwise led to his arrest and might have prevented him from shooting up Parkland's Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School in February 2018. The Parkland massacre is a stark indictment of the use of restorative justice as an alternative to the school-to-prison pipeline. If elected, I will insist that restorative justice be used to supplement rather than displace traditional judicial process.
Thank you. And Mr. Takas. As the only candidate that is currently serving on the board, the Political Action Committee and the members said that the focus for you is on action. So what are you going to do with your time remaining on the board? Are you proposing any ordinances or working on specific actions that we can see and judge you on your candidacy? And again, we have 90 seconds for that, a minute and a half.
Thank you. So we had quite a, quite a year of action here and we talked a lot about that. We just finished the conversation about the Community Oversight Board for Policing and everything that was related to that. And this is another piece of action that needs to be, you know, supported right now because this is now when the rubber hits the the road. This committee needs to be staffed, we need to hire the independent auditor monitor. It is a flaw that the county manager has to formally employ or choose this this person. We have asked the the General Assembly to change that and to fix other flaws in this. So this is coming up. The second thing that I believe that it's central is to finish the Serrano issue, to restore the quality of housing that this Arlington County-supported housing operator, affordable housing operator, C needs to provide. We will have tomorrow testimony from them to on the progress of that. And then there are several other issues that are coming up. There there will be action on budget guidance for the next year. And this is the budget guidance that that will have to do with our climbing out from COVID and learning and applying the lessons.
Thank you, thank you. I I want to take a few moments now to go to some of the responses that were in the chat. In regard to the question that had to do with the housing, a question was asked, why are the developers keeping the majority of profits for getting upzoning approval instead of paying into, I'm not sure what this word is, a proffer system? Like other neighboring jurisdictions, which means property taxes will have to increase at unsustainable rates. So the example given is that the developer pays for a one-story and then gets 10 stories. I think that might be a little exaggeration, but I understand what they're saying in terms of the fact that by right, they can do one thing, but then they go into community, I mean, into negotiation with the county and they end up getting something that gives them more density, higher, you know, levels to build and the like, but they don't pay the difference. So I'm going to ask. Theo, why don't you answer that for us first? What what is your perspective on that? Do you understand the question? I think I do.
I think so. I'll give it, I'll give a roll anyway.
You got a minute.
All right, thanks. So I'm not a huge fan of the current setup where, as you were saying, we have a set of rules for developers and then we allow those developers to go higher, go denser, you know, in exchange for certain things. If we're going to have this system, we may as well open it up to more things that people, that developers can can use to have that density, to have that extra amount. I'm in favor of density. I'm in favor of higher, taller buildings. I think that we need more of that in the county. And I know that Ms. Clements and I are diametrically opposed in that regard. But if we're going to have density, we should make sure that we are getting investments into HF, into the Affordable Housing Investment Fund, that we make sure that we're getting some green space out of it as well. That's another thing that we can be using. We can, you know, development and density don't have to be diametrically opposed to more parks and more right-of-ways. We can use the fact that developers want to build higher and build denser to the advantage of the environment. I hope that those are answering on your questions a bit, or your question a bit.
They're, they're, they're coming close. I think you answered it well in the very beginning and then kind of.
Yeah, deviated a bit.
Not a problem. Mike, let's go to you next. What's your perspective on what, how the county allows the developers to make these changes that are not, that are, that are, you know, often give them additional advantages without paying more into the county?
So I'm for more market rate affordable housing. I'm skeptical of government-run affordable housing programs. Most people are not interested in joining a government-run affordable housing program and showing their last two tax returns and their last two pay stubs. They they want to own their own home or apartment, or they want to live in in an apartment that they can afford and they 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 figure out how they can live in those rather than going through the government. I'm I'm skeptical about the current program as Adam was talking about where where there's, it's rather than just having a general land use plan where everyone follows the same rules, there's always these special rules where developers have a opportunity to influence the county board. And sometimes they influence through campaign donations.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to Takas. Let's go to you next.
Thank you. First of all, I don't take money from any developers or any people related to developers, not not the least. But let me, let me put it this way. So profers and we have a system here in Arlington of of public benefits that come with every development that asks for a site plan. That's not a by-right development. So this is additional, we give additional density for for green and open spaces, for childcare, for environmental benefits, so better buildings, for for improvements of the public space, et cetera. So what I can say is that we have to refine that system even more. We have to make it a little bit more transparent. All the public benefits for every site plan is, are really neatly lined up and and reported on in every site plan. But I believe that every year we have to report to the community more about that and actually give the community a possibility to evaluate whether we are in the right place and we are asking for the right things from from our general development trajectory here.
That, that, that's good to hear. We just hope that you guys listen if we get that opportunity.
But then. We measure that for every, every single building. You will find it lined up. There is also.
Hold on, Takas. I'm not saying whether it's measured. I'm saying whether the.
We report it.
Whether, no, I'm saying whether the decisions are being based on the data. That's my question. But we, we have a short amount of time and I want to let Audrey answer this question and then I have one final question.
Okay, first of all, I want to clear up a couple of misconceptions. The most important misconception is that that upzoning will actually extract benefits for the community, whether large or small, that is not the case. If if single-family homes, neighborhoods are upzoned, that means that the developer can come in by right and therefore, and build as high as the zoning ordinance will allow, which in this case might be 10 stories. And in that case, the county can extract no benefits from the developer. So that's the first misconception I would like to clear up. Secondly, Mr. Theo says I'm opposed to densification. Not it, not exactly. I'm opposed, I I support densification of the R and B quarter. I oppose densification of single-family neighborhoods. But more importantly than anything else, I oppose the misrepresentation of the upzoning process as something benefiting the minority community, which indeed it will not, because it will not produce housing affordable to them. Now regarding.
Audrey, yeah, I think your time is up. I have six minutes left before we've got to get to the next one and we've had a very timely question drop into the chat that I want to finish with. And you each have 60 seconds to answer this question. Are we doing enough to address COVID-19 in Arlington? What would you do differently? Audrey, let's start with you.
Well, I understand that the the numbers that were just reported by the county today indicate that Arlingtonians are vaccinating at a higher rate than the nationwide rate. I think there is up to a 10% differential. I can't remember the exact numbers. I I believe that two-thirds of the nation has received at least one shot, but we have something like 70% or.
I'm going to hold you to the fire here. Okay, are we doing enough in Arlington? What would you do differently? You have 30 seconds left.
All right, I I support what Governor Governor Northam has done. I am not opposed to it. I would encourage more of public advertisement of the benefits of vaccination. For example, DC has a great ad on why people should get vaccinated. I I might be honest with you, I couldn't do any better than DC government on this question.
Thank you. Thank you. So now let's go to Takas.
We are not doing enough. We will never do enough to 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 get rid of COVID. We we need to to hone in and increase our our investment in getting every single Arlingtonian vaccinated, including when we have to apply soft, even strong power to get to to get the desired, the desired vaccination rates, including mandates, in my, in my opinion. The, the, what we have done for COVID until now is very positive. It had very good results. Still, there are hard to get communities that have been left behind us. They are not so behind right now, but we have to do even more.
So what would you give? Give me, give me a couple of things you would do.
I would start a second round, especially with very small businesses and the communities that that employ undocumented immigrants, et cetera, to make sure that they are all vaccinated. I would make sure that all our public employees are vaccinated without exception, zero exception. I would make sure that we are in constant contact with our schools to see what else they need since they are open and they are, and the risk is great there, to 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 give them even more resources to to deal with potential outbreaks and contain them and test and trace like hell.
I've got to stop you. Thank you very much. Appreciate the detail. Theo.
Sure. No, we're not doing enough. And I like to say that, yes, I think it was a JD that just said soft versus hard power. I agree with that. Mandates are one of those things that sounds really good on paper. It's, it's easy to write on a, you know, on paper, to type up and then pass out and say that with a mandate, we'll get everybody 100% fully vaccinated. What people don't seem to realize, or at least what politicians don't seem to realize, is that you, with that, create a hard, immediate backlash against that sort of thing. Unfortunately, vaccines are one of these things that's become so politicized in our country now, which is a shame because vaccines and the technology behind them is freaking awesome. One of the greatest human inventions of all, of all time, but here we are arguing over these petty semantics of how to get them done. Other things that we haven't done nearly enough in this county, including while Takas has been on the board, is coverage for vaccines, say, on the west end of the Pike, which was neglected for a few months. We also don't have any mobile units to go out door-to-door to people's homes to help get them vaccinated. I'm sure that there's a significant portion of people here in the county that want to get vaccinated, but it, I mean, they just aren't able to. It's an inconvenience. So mobile units, Prince William County's done that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have mobile units, by the way. We have them.
Can I go now?
Yes, Mike, it's your turn. Sorry.
Thank you. So I'm not sure if this is a government solution or a combination of government and private sector, but we need to show more love to our first responders, our our schoolteachers and people in our hospitals, nurses, doctors, other medical professionals. They have seen the brunt of this pandemic and many of them are completely burnt out and they are leaving in droves. The attrition rate for the police force is at 10% annual and will probably get worse. School teachers all over the county are quitting left and right. School teachers all over the county are are quitting left and right. They are they are burnt out. They're tired of their administration and their parents who are 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 giving them a hard time uh about the whole uh school system. So I would I would spend more money on mental health care. We we we're using money in the county for other things, but we definitely need to have uh more mental health professionals that are available to the general public because so many people are struggling through this pandemic.
Thank you, Mike. Well, I think this has been a great discussion. Uh, I have really appreciated listening to your perspectives. Um, I want to ask Catherine. I think I'm on time. It's eight o'clock.
Um, Ca- uh Catherine, Wilma and Catherine, if you don't mind, I want to jump in for a second and if you may, Wilma. I I want the the candidates to give a um one minute closing, uh, if they may, if if that's okay with y'all. I'd like to hear that. For our members.
Okay, um, why don't we go uh Adam, Audrey, Mike, and Takas in alphabetical order?
Sure. So one minute. All right. Uh, we've gone over a lot of policy and this is great. And I I love this forum, in particular of all the ones I've done so far, because it's really delved into the policy and gives the candidates the time to really get into and Wilma's been great at pushing back on us. Um, so I'll spend this time to talk a little bit about myself. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, I would be the only candidate, the only person on the board that's gone through the criminal justice system. Uh, as a teenager, I got in a lot of trouble and went before police and judges and spent months in county jail. I would also be the only county board member that has been homeless twice in my life. Once living out of a backpack in a Florida summer and the second time, uh, the very first few months I moved up here to DC living living out of a beat up car uh during Snowmageddon of two thousand, two thousand nine. Um, and uh, all right, I'll close it there. Thank you, Wilma.
Thank you. I'm trying to keep it close because I know we have our school board folks and we don't have as much time for them. Audrey, your turn. You get sixty seconds.
Okay, the choice in this year's county board race is clear. An engaged community leader or a rubber stamp? I'm the former and the incumbent is the latter. This year, Takas Karantunas rubber stamped a tax package that increased the effective residential real estate tax by six percent. He also facilitated demolition of the architecturally significant Rouse Estate by agreeing to delay a hearing on local historic designation for the building and voting to deny historic designation for this civil war site. Takas knows how to go along to get along with county board, but what Arlington needs is an elected leader willing to take a stand. If elected to county board, I won't claim credit for rubber stamping done deals. I won't push harmful housing policies and permit destruction of Arlington's cultural heritage. Vote Clement Independent for County Board on November second and visit my website at www.audreclament.com.
Thank you, Audrey. Totally appreciate your response and your respect for the time. Mike, it's your turn.
I'm a twenty-eight-year resident of Arlington and a longtime civic activist. Arlington needs new leadership on the county board. We need county board members who think and act independently. We need elected officials who are unbeholden to political parties or special interest groups. And we need county board members who will listen, really listen to their constituents. As I knock on the doors in Green Valley and Highview Park neighborhoods, I hear the frustration of the black and brown residents. They are tired of the empty promises of the county board members and the long delays in starting capital projects such as Fire Station Number Eight and the John Robinson Town Square. Who will who will we, you, hold accountable for these failures? In our democracy, we must hold our elected leaders accountable and the only way to hold them accountable is at the ballot box. Imagine me taking the seat on the dais on January fourth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. I am not some scary outsider with radical views. I've lived in Arlington longer than anyone else on this forum. I've raised three children here and I'm your neighbor. Vote for me in November.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And let's close out this part of the of the forum with Takas. Thank you. You have a minute.
Thank you, the W A C P, the committee and everybody who worked on this. I have to tell you uh from the bottom of my heart, the questionnaire that you sent out was the most substantive, substantial, all encompassing, significant questionnaire that I had the pleasure to to work on. And saying that pleasure, normally it's not, you know, it's not a pleasure to to, you know, in a busy, in a busy campaign to to fill out a questionnaire, but it was a pleasure for me because it centers and frames my mind. During the year that I've been on the county board, I learned a lot. I had to learn. I had to learn from you. Uh, I sat down with her, the communities that I knew, where I come I'm coming from. I was a community person before and I'm still a community person and I hope that you still see me as that. Uh, and I have learned how difficult it is to climb out of a pandemic like COVID. But more difficult it is to climb out of inequality and restore equity in Arlington. So I I I'm running for county board because I want to count with your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of the candidates. Um, I really appreciate your responses and um I think that everyone who is participating tonight and the folks who would see it on Facebook uh and then time before the uh election will be able to get some good information in terms of the issues that are important to all of us who live here in Arlington. So I want to thank you. And Catherine, I'm gonna throw it back to you so that we can move on to the school floor.
Excellent. Thank you again to our county board candidates and also moderator uh Jones. Uh, we are going to move into uh the second portion of our candidate forum today and that is for our two candidates for for the school board. Uh, we will not be doing bios as we did before. We will again be dropping uh the campaign email or campaign website in the chat for others to look at. So, Wilma, I'll pass it back to you to get this started.
Great. Thank you both, Mary and Major, for joining me here this evening. Um, again, we are not going to start off with any kind of intros because your bios have been made available in the emails and in the chat. Um, and so hopefully everyone has um already taken advantage of that. But um, what we want to do with you all is before we go into details, and there are quite a bit that we want to speak with about in the next half hour, let's fast forward ahead four years. And let's imagine that you are reflecting back on your successful term on the Arlington County School Board. What single measurable achievement or accomplishment would you most like to see reflected in your tenure? And if you were here on the beginning, you know, I'm gonna hold you tight to these times. So you've got sixty seconds. Let's start off with you, Mary.
I would want to see in four years' time that we've made progress on equity and that would begin by having a dashboard with relevant data that is open and publicly accessible because I really believe that we can't solve problems that we don't own and we haven't really been owning and communicating transparently about our equity problems. So it would start there and then over four years, I'd want to look at that dashboard and I'd want to see um improvement in multiple areas and um I'd want us all to feel really good about that.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Webb, what is the single measurable achievement or accomplishment that you would most like to see reflected in your tenure? You're on mute if you're speaking.
Ah, there we go. Uh, past ten years, we haven't had one kid, black, white, red, yellow, green.
No, 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 no. We're gonna stick. We're gonna stick to the questions. What single measurable achievement or accomplishment would you most like to see reflected in your tenure if you were to successfully be elected to Arlington County Public Schools? I need that single measurable achievement.
Yes, had you let me continue, I would say, have a student uh admitted to my school. Uh, and we haven't had it in ten years. That's memorable.
I I'm sorry. Could you expand on that?
Uh, sure. I I I graduated from the most competitive college in uh in Virginia. Uh, I was actually uh admitted to UVA as a white student and also uh, well, you know, married a white student. Uh, I went to Washington Lake. We had uh, goodness gracious, twenty five come in, I was graduating. Talk about stuff. We have, I believe, buried in the chapel, but in the past.
But what does that specifically have to do with your measurable achievement on the Arlington County Public School Board? I'm just trying to connect it.
Kids passing the uh SOL. You don't have kids uh scoring a a good score in the only SAT. You didn't take the PSAT this year. You can't get into my school.
So what would your achievement be? That you would have more black kids take in past the SOL?
To have a child get into my school, to have better scores in the SOL, to actually take the PSAT.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, if you had to score the current school system as a whole to how well it is serving the needs of communities of color, what would you, what score would you give on an A to F scale and why? And how do you perceive the state of affairs today? So again, start off with your score of A to F and then you can go ahead and tell us about why and how you perceive the state of affairs. And we're gonna start off with you, Mr. Webb. And again, you're gonna have um a minute.
Uh, sure. Yeah. Uh, we can get a kid out of Jersey City into Washington Lake. We can't get a kid from Arlington and that's pretty bad, uh, whether I'm considered black or not. Uh, also, uh, we've done studies inside Arlington. What we found is that uh uh kids of color, they feel that their schools do not uh appreciate their culture. They looked at teachers and they found that teachers feel that achievement uh is something that gets in the way. Uh, they feel they'd have to lower their standards in order to do it. We've got parents that don't know that you have a a minority achievement program. These things need to be addressed in order to get kids, especially kids of color, in in a better position to succeed.
Thank you. Now, Mary, same question to you. What score would you give to the schools in terms of how they're serving the needs of communities of color? Why you feel that way and how you perceive the state of affairs today?
Yeah, I think I would give Arlington Public Schools a D in its service to communities of color. I think um and I say D because only because I feel like when we look at other school systems around the Commonwealth, I think we are in a better state than a lot of other schools. And I look at Loudoun County as one example where we are acknowledging, we are acknowledging that systemic racism exists and we're committed to addressing that in our curriculum and that's not the same in every every place. It's a D because of a lot of things I mentioned in my questionnaire, so I hope you read that, but it's a D because we have not been serious about um admitting to our problems with achievement. We have not created school culture where restorative justice and where disciplinary exclusion policies and where trauma-informed practice have been seriously considered. Um, we are not engaging, when we do community engagement processes, we are not engaging in ways that um that honor and center the perspectives of BIPOC people in our community. So I think those are all areas and more where we need to improve upon what we've done.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate those honest responses. Now, we're gonna go on to another subject that is um sometimes a little controversial, but definitely needs to be discussed and it's got to do with boundaries. With the boundary drawing process coming again, what work do you think needs to be done to achieve these integrated schools? And what role should the school board play in helping to make this transformative change happen? You know, how do we get at this whole housing and how it impacts schools? Because again, um, in in the neighborhood that I live close to in Yorktown, the boundaries that were done the last time made Yorktown even more white. You took away an area where children of color lived so that now they go to W N L. So, you know, how do we, how do we, how do we prevent this? Um, and so uh and we're gonna give you a chance for rebuttal on this one. So um, Mr. Webb, why don't you go first? You're gonna have a minute. Then we're gonna have Ms. Kadera and then each of you can come back and give rebuttal if you want to clarify something.
Oh, yeah, sure. Um, I don't believe the black lines matter. I think what we have to do is just make sure that every school, no matter where you are, zip code, is performing well. You go to Wakefield High School, that is your least performing high school. It also happens to be uh your most diverse. You go to Yorktown, that is your least diverse high school and they are the best performing. In fact, a kid of color is gonna do better there. Why can't they do better at Wakefield High School?
Well, uh, Mr. Webb, I just want to tell you that's not always true about Yorktown. You have a number of children of color who are in the Yorktown district who go choose to go to W N L and I know many of them personally. So you need to check your, check your statistics on that one. But Ms. Kadera, um, I want to ask you the same question.
Yeah, I think that it is, we are overdue to have a difficult conversation in Arlington about integrating our schools. And um in my questionnaire and in it actually in correspondence and recommendations that I've made to the school board and APS on behalf of the CCP TA, I've called for this conversation. We need to talk about why integration is our goal and collectively get clear about that and we need to look at the available options to integrate schools. The two that are most commonly deployed across the country are busing and creating magnet schools or full choice option programs. There may be others beyond that that we haven't considered, but it's absolutely the school board's responsibility to force that conversation to happen. The school board needs to say that we're gonna make that happen. They need to revise the boundary policy so that there are not six different factors, but there are fewer factors and um and integration and desegregation of our schools is one priority factor uh because it often gets, if you pay attention to boundary processes, it often among those six factors is the last one at the end of the day beyond things like walkability and transportation.
Thank you. Um, are we good? Any rebuttal? Any follow-up?
Oh, yeah, sure. Uh, integration, putting a white kid next to a black kid does not solve your problem. What you want to do is you want to have equal education no matter where you are in. This is what you need to do. This is what Brown v. Board of Education was all about. These were the cases that I was involved in with Ray Brown in Jersey City, who also represented uh Ericane Carter. These are the things that you need to be doing. You need to be making sure that all schools are equals. You don't have to worry about where you live and what it do.
Okay, so let me ask you the next question. So what role should the school board be playing in addressing these inequitable resources of our schools as supplemented by the local PTAs? You have PTAs in the northwest part of the county that are extremely rich and you have ones in you know, down in the south side, down off Columbia Pike and the lake, that don't have the same types of resources. So what role should the school board be playing in addressing these inequitable resources of our schools?
One of the important things, is this, is my question?
Is you go first. You're both gonna get it, but you go first.
Sure. One of the important things is that you want to make sure that teachers, we go to the army, move them around. Do not let somebody homestead at Yorktown. Do not let somebody homestead at Wakefield because they end up getting inside that kind of normalized kind of thing.
But no, 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 no. That doesn't have to do with inequitable resources. That's got to do with instruction. So let let's stick to the question because the, you know, the political action committee and the members did a lot of work on what they wanted you all to cover. So let's stick to the subject. What about the inequitable resources as presented by the different PTAs? Is that something the school board should address? Yes or no?
Yeah, sure. It should address, make sure that every PTA is getting the same resources, but still, what has to happen is that you have to just make sure that everyone is provided with the same thing down from pencils, papers, buildings, but also to teachers that are coming into that school.
Okay, that's a good point. A good point that hasn't been brought up before. Mary, would love to hear your perspective on this. And again, you have a minute.
Moderator Jones, is it okay if I give my rebuttal to the last question? Because I didn't.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll give you, we'll give you a minute and a half. Do your rebuttal and then answer the question.
So the rebuttal I wanted to say to the boundary question is when I said we need to have a conversation about what are our goals for integration, what I meant, what I meant that as part of that and maybe perhaps didn't make clear is we need to have a conversation about whether integration is our goal and if so, why and how we are going to achieve it. We may instead decide that we want to, as a community, adopt an approach where it is not important that we achieve more demographic diversity in our schools and we're instead gonna look at the resourcing of every school as Major Webb has. But we haven't had that conversation. That's my point. In the resource question, there are two parts to this. One is PTA spending and it's absolutely imperative that the school board play a role. There is a policy that comes up this October about fundraising by PTAs and other external groups because PTAs are in fact external organizations. And the CCP TA has submitted comments that we would like to see incorporated into the school board policy that restricts and um and more clearly delineates what kinds of fundraising are appropriate by PTAs. that restricts and, and more clearly delineates what kinds of fundraising are appropriate by PTAs and, and their engagement with school leaders. So yes, on the PTA question, the other thing I'll just say on the resource question is that APS in its CIP, its Capital Improvement Plan, needs to do a lot more with looking at the equity of its facilities. And we should begin every CIP process by doing an audit of all of our school facilities to understand the inequities in the learning environments that our students are in. And that should be the foundation for every CIP, not future projected seat needs.
Wow, good point, good point. All right, so now let's go to a real timely question that I know everyone wishes that we were out of. But unfortunately, we're still in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. And we have kids going back to school five days a week. What gaps or concerns or breakdowns have occurred in the past 18 months that need to be addressed? And from this, we're talking about leadership, curriculum outreach. We're not talking about, you know, what the kids, we're talking about the overall systemic piece. How should we, we should, how should we be working on these? And then, you know, I am about my first question. I want to know, where do we start? Mary, let's go to you first.
I would say in terms of breakages that became apparent to us, right? One is school safety. We still don't have a comprehensive and coherent school meal plan for safe meals. And winter is coming and it's only going to get worse. We have not had real clear guidance and a really pervasive push to get vaccination happening and surveillance testing happening in our schools. So that's a safety piece. I think the other thing that probably most of you know about are big breakdowns in the virtual learning program where for the first few weeks of school, that didn't happen. We had a breakdown with summer school last year and timely planning and budgeting to have a robust summer school program to make up for lost learning time. And the last thing I'm seeing that I'm really worried about is we still have 70 openings for teaching staff in APS. And that's actually a higher vacancy rate than a week ago. So we have a real problem in making sure that we have actual qualified personnel in our schools to work with our students on their academic and social emotional needs. And that's a big concern.
Thank you, thank you. Good information, disturbing but good. Mr. Webb, can you talk to us about what are those gaps, concerns and breakdowns that we have seen in the last 18 months that we need to get working on to address? And again, where do we start?
Yeah, sure. Actually, March 2nd of last year, the Assistant Director of HOOP sat there and said, nobody read his report. Forty-page report told us everything. Nothing has really changed from that forty-page report. They determined that it was a less than 5% infected disease. That by definition is four times too low to be transferred between person to person and 12 times too low for a super spreader event. I was, I helped start the organization, was able to tell the president about COVID-19 in November of 2019.
But you're not telling me about the gaps you want to address.
Yes, well, one thing is that a virus is the least likely threat to mankind. If you've got a virus that has infected over 37 million Americans. Right now, we're in court, we're about to get a, get an injunction to stop the government from withholding whether or not the secondary attack rate and the, and the infectious dose of COVID-19 is classified. It can only be classified if we own it.
Okay. I understand that you, that's fine. If that's as specific as you'd like to be, that, that is fine. Let's move forward and talk about.
That's how intelligent you do.
No, that, that you're not, you're not addressing my question, but it's all good. It's all good. We can move to the next question. The next question is specific to issues with special education requirements, resources. And there, one of the previous candidates for the Arlington County School Board, who is one of the leaders in the Education Committee here in NAACP, has pointed out, and it was recently an article in regard to issues like this in Arlington Magazine, regarding issues like testing for specific types of special education requirements. Specifically, in one case that she talked about, it was dyslexia. And the fact that her child at a school in the south side, I believe it was Drew Elementary, could not get access to these tests, but that if you were a student at Jamestown, that those tests were available there. What, this is a major concern. I, I had no idea that it was true, but it is true. This is discriminatory. How is the school, is the school board going to address this? I mean, it was in an article in the Arlington Magazine and I haven't seen anything that is, that has even been addressed with that. And that's a major issue. Mr. Webb, can you, can we stay on point? Can you answer that one?
Yeah, sure, sure. Well, if you can understand it, that's not my fault. However, in 2013, they did a report on special education and they found that our assessors consistently failed to distinguish between cognitive impairment and cultural difference. That means that if I look at a Hispanic kid, I'm going to say that they are, they have special ed problems. We need.
Right, but, but Mr. Webb, I'm going to stop you again and say, I appreciate the factual information that you are providing in terms of this subject, but that is not telling the audience who's trying to make a decision on whether to vote for you or Mary. How will you handle this discriminatory issue in Arlington? Not what a study said. How are you going to handle it in Arlington?
For, I sue the school, has Mary ever sued the school board? No, she hasn't. I've sued them twice over your.
You're going to be.
Running for office. I don't plan to be elected. I'm only doing this because when they look at you people and they see that you don't have a candidate and all of your kids have an achievement gap, what does that say to the school board? It says that you don't care.
Okay, I appreciate your perspective. Mary, what is your perspective of this? If you, what, what do you think the school board should do about these issues?
I think that it's, the school board absolutely needs to look into inequities related to special education, students with disabilities and, and other inequities in the system, right? I think that some of the things that will come into play over the next year that are really important. One is the hiring of a general in-house counsel in APS. And it's my hope that with in-house legal counsel, we're going to see some increased attention and pressure on making sure that things are equitably handled across the schools. We've had a big problem for a long time in consistency in adherence to special education law. It is not, it is not just good practice, it is law. And so adherence to the law across all the schools is something that I'm hoping general counsel will help with. It should be enshrined in policy in the reorg that the superintendent has in his cabinet. Accountability of school leadership in a new way with, to, in that org structure should help this, this phenomenon of every school has been an island and every principal has been able to do things differently in the special education sphere.
Those are good perspectives. I hope that if you're elected, that some of the ideas can be discussed. I just, I, I think that many of the people who are on this forum, listening to this forum just have concerns that, again, like with the issues that people were asking about county board, sometimes you have to just, you know, use the media and other things to get these kind of issues pushed forward. So we really want to know what you all are going to try to do. And I know we're running late on time. So let's go to an issue in regard to SROs. So the school board voted to physically remove school resource officers from the schools. But it appears that all of these requirements are just going to be moved offsite. And so how will you ensure if you're elected that the remaining relationship and memorandum of understanding, the MOU, doesn't result in a backdoor way of keeping SROs? Mary, let's go to you first.
The SRO Working Group delivered last spring a detailed and really thoughtful set of recommendations that was the result of a lot of intensive work. And some of you in the audience were part of that working group. It is a little baffling to me that we're now going through a round two of a community engagement process with focus groups and a survey. I took that survey last week and I was really disturbed to see the questions that were being asked that feel to me like a big step backwards from a set of detailed recommendations that simply should be at this point being carried forward and enshrined in an MOU. So I have questions about why we're doing another round of community engagement when I don't, I think the message from that group was clear. And I feel like it's incumbent upon the school board to make sure that every one of those recommendations is enshrined in the MOU that they're going to get.
Thank you. That's good info. And now, Mr. Webb, can you answer that and just talk to us about how if you are elected, that you will make sure that the relationship is not just a backdoor way of keeping SROs? If that's how you feel?
Sure, sure, sure. Well, one, I will not be elected. I don't plan to be elected. However, I will say this. In terms of disciplinary problems with kids, one, you're sending a bad, bad message. If I go into a school and I see a police officer, I hopped off a plane in Leningrad in 1975 and saw AK-47s and dogs, I did not feel comfortable. However, what you have to do is you want to make sure that you don't put yourself in a position where you're going to have to have that kind of resource in your school. You have to get parents involved. Black parents, Hispanic parents don't go to your special education PTA meetings. They don't come to the school board meetings. There has to be more involvement at the community level. Government can't do it.
Okay, so again, I do want to state, please go in the chat because I know that people are making comments and things that you may want to see. And just like we had comments from some of the candidates on the previous one about sometimes when we ask questions about what you're going to do, the candidates put it back on the, on the residence. So again, I encourage you to go in and look at those comments. But we've come to the end. This has been a very invigorating and engaging conversation. So I want to thank both of you. But we're going to close now with giving each of you a one-minute time to please give us your closing statement and tell us why you believe that we should support you with our votes in the next election. Mr. Webb, can you go first, please? And again, you have 60 seconds.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm a third-generation college graduate, one of 13% of black males that actually has a college degree. I'm a third-generation military officer, I'm a third generation from slavery. My grandfather was a franchise martyr, but I don't want your vote. I don't think that it's important to vote. I think it's more important to be prepared for the test. Just like when you go in to take your algebra exam, don't go in there uninformed. You need to be informed. Keep Mike Webb away from my school. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Mary, will you close us out, please?
Sure. I just want to begin by thanking President Spain and Moderator Jones and the Political Action Committee and the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity for sponsoring this. I appreciate the, the forum and the questionnaire, which I got to say was very thorough and, and really, really thoughtful, the way that that was put together. What I want to say in my last few seconds is I've spent my life working in education. It's what I live and breathe for. I care about our public schools. I care about our students. I, you know, I have no political ambitions. I came to this because I feel like I have skills and experience that can help. And our schools are at a tipping point and, and need, need our help. I also want to be frank and acknowledge that I believe it's important for our school board to include perspectives of people of color. And I recognize that I can't bring that experience personally. And I hope that what I will demonstrate to you if I'm elected is that I honor those perspectives and center them in my work and that you will see me wanting to listen carefully and wanting to amplify what I'm hearing from you. And what you will see from me are not just words, but actions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you both. Again, thank you to the NAACP and the Political Action Committee for this opportunity to have these candidates share their opinions and their perspectives firsthand with the members. I am, of course, a happy member of NAACP and just thrilled with all of the work that the leadership has done this year. So again, thank you for the opportunity to serve as moderator. I appreciate it. And I hope that I've done you proud.
Let's give Ms. Wilma Jones a virtual hand clap, everyone. Wilma, thank you for moderating tonight. And I also want to say a thanks to all the candidates who showed up and participated in the NAACP's forum. This is what we do as a nonpartisan organization. We allow a platform for those with ambition and want to be elected representatives in our community to come, let their voices be heard. I think we had close to 100 individuals on the call at any, at any given time, at one time. And that is really not bad for a Monday night, considering, you know, people worked all day. I will say this. The, you know, you know, we, we don't respond well to insults. The NAACP is here for everyone. So everyone has a right to voice what they may feel. But that doesn't mean that, because you, what you may say is factual, right? That being said, I received a number of comments throughout the night about what was going on, what was being said about some of the candidates. But I believe strongly, we have to give candidates this forum and let the people hear from them, right? But this is not a place where we're coming to insult each other, talk down to each other. Just speak why you think the people need to elect you. And if you're not running for election, so be it. Very good meeting, very good forum. I did put in the chat, and I don't know if the Political Action Committee wants to come on and say a few things about next week, but we will be having our, oh, there's Casey. I'll, I'll bring you up and I'll keep quiet. You want to talk to what's going on next week?
Yeah, yeah. So, thank you. Thank you, President Spain. Again, want to echo our thanks to the candidates for A, completing the forum and B, completing the questionnaire and B, being here tonight with us. And that shout out to our PAC members for putting all of that together. And also the biggest shout out to Moderator Jones. She, again, did a phenomenal job. And I'm so happy that we have her. And she also, just a quick shout out, she actually is a published author, a very good published author. So definitely check out her works. She is a great community leader. And again, we were so happy to have her on here. For our next forum, we are having, this is part of a two-part series. We covered the county board and school board today, but we will be doing a state-level delicate forum as well. And that will be on September 30th from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. So please look out for any kind of communication regarding that for registration. It will be somewhat similar to this event and we really hope that you can join us for that one as well. And I think with that, I believe we've already started to post our voter registration links. Again, remember to get out there and vote. The general election is on November 2nd. And early voting starts on September 17th and voter registration ends on October 12th. All right. And then, President, if you'd like to close us out until weekend.
That, that is it for this evening. That concludes, I'm going to stop recording here, if I can. Madam Secretary, do you still have co-hosts? Do you have?